Okay, we'll call to order a special meeting. We have a quorum, a special meeting due to movement meeting from last night to tonight to enjoy the Drums Across Kansas. So, first thing on our agenda would be invocation. Pastor John Harms, lead us in invocation.
Thanks for this opportunity. Probably isn't the appropriate time, but I feel like, I thought there was a law of some sort, I'm not an expert, on open meetings, and I feel like three of them gathered and discussed something. I'm not going to point out anything, but two of them kind of got left out of that discussion.
No, 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 no. They got left out.
Oh, there you go. There you go. All right, well, that's a great. Well, thank you for a sense of humor and for, you know, just being able to laugh. But Lord, we also know that these are serious times that we are a part of. Many issues in our nation, in our state, even in our city, that need guidance and clear direction. And I pray for these leaders here this evening, that you will continue to give them a sureness and a firm foundation. Lord, help us to be a people not of just of talk, but of action. Lord, I pray for safety, for patience. And, Lord, again, I thank you for our emergency volunteers, for EMS, for our firefighters, for our police officers. God, direct them and give them, again, a great measure of your wisdom and discernment. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right. We'll need to pledge allegiance. Stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our agenda. No appointments or personal appearances brings us to public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda, as in, everybody had a chance to see your minutes and information for the consent agenda in your packets. Any questions or comments on that? Or none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on our agenda would be a resolution to amend Supplement Resolution 2729.
Yes, Mayor, the original resolution authorizing Project 434, which was the geometric improvement of Central Avenue at Topeka Street, the turn lane in front of the hospital was added and we removed on street parking. We're asking you to amend the resolution. We had an overage on the project. We encountered some water lines that were aged and interference with storm sewer that had to be relocated. So, we went ahead and did that work and we found some unfavorable road base conditions, especially around Topeka Avenue, which was part of the non-participating cost that KDOT so the city would have made those a precaution there as well. The total project cost altogether was $520,000, $520,310.70. Of that, the city of El Dorado was responsible for $98,303. The rest was paid by the Kansas Department of Transportation.
What's resolution number?
Twenty-eight twenty-one.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I guess the water line that we ran across that needed to be replaced, is that, would that be, does it come out of our general fund or, not general fund, but do you have any kind of?
It's an enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund, so it's paid for by the water?
Right.
Okay.
There was also some valving that we added. It was a unique situation where we could not lose water to the hospital, definitely. We had to insert a valve, which was a very expensive endeavor, but to be able to keep the hospital water service, that was part of the cost. At any time you expose those old cast iron water lines.
Plan on replacing them.
You know, you can have a leak problem.
All right. Resolution is twenty-eight twenty-one, is that what you heard?
Yeah.
I entertain a motion. If there's more, I guess, any other discussion or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2821, Resolution Amendment and Supplementing Resolution Number 2729, the city of El Dorado, Kansas, which authorized the improvement or re-improvement of a main trafficway within the city of El Dorado, Kansas, and provided for the payment of the costs that are.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item four is Amendment to the Bond Issue, Bond Series 2016A.
Good evening. My name is Kim Bell, Kim Warren Bell, City's Bond Council. Last month, we were here and the new adopted Resolution 2820, authorizing us to proceed with the sale of general obligation bonds and not to exceed amount of $7 million, $300,000. And that was to finance a portion of the cost of the library improvements, to finance a couple of water system improvements, and primarily to refund or repay your KDHE loan for sewer wastewater treatment, plumbing treatments. After we had that resolution adopted, it came to our attention that there were two additional, actually, three additional projects that were complete and were ready for bond financing, and so it made sense to try and include those projects in this bond issue that we're getting ready to go to market. Those projects include Project 295 and 447, which is the paving of Towanda Road. Those were special assessment projects, and I think in last June, we spread the special assessments on those projects. So, now they're ready to go to bonding. Then also the project we were just discussing, the Central Avenue intersection improvements, the city's share of those costs that KDOT was not paying at approximately $100,000, we're going to add that to this bond issue as well. So, that will make a total of approximately $8 million, $870,000. The actual amount of the bond issue will vary slightly when the bonds are marketed. Some may be sold at a premium, which will receive a little additional fund, so we've reserved the right to adjust that principal amount when the bonds are actually marketed. The sale of the bonds will be on August 15th, and we will come back to you then with the results of the sale and the documents to actually authorize the issuance of the bonds. Your financial advisor, Springstead, has rerun all of the numbers for the increased amount and provided new debt service schedules. Tom Calico couldn't be here tonight, but he asked me to come and cover the meeting. None of this impacts the projected savings on the refinancing of the KDHE loan. All we're doing is inserting these additional projects that are ready to be bonded. So, the action tonight would be to adopt a resolution which would amend the previous sale resolution and authorize the bonding of these additional projects for a total of approximately $8 million, $870,000. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm sorry, $8 million, 780, I had my numbers transcribed.
That was going to be my question.
Well, there you go.
The role in these bonds, putting up this, that we approved last month, is a favorable interest rate, correct? Does that have any effect on the assessments to those, to the Towanda Avenue residents?
If we can get them in here and get them at the rate Tom kind of projected to you all last meeting, that's a benefit to them.
To them?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a better rate for?
Well, the rate that their assessments are based on are based on the actual rate of the bond when it's sold, so.
But this is as low as that's been. This is, that's, it was after hearing his report that we took and looked at the, some temp notes that we had to roll them into this. It's just too good a time, and there was nothing any reason to wait.
Okay, that's my question.
Yep.
Any other questions from the commission? Thank you so much. Thanks for coming down. Number, please.
Twenty-eight twenty-two.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing done, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2822, Resolution Supplementing Resolution Number 2820, approving a revised notice of bond sale and authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bond, Series 2016A, of the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. KDOT agreement, item number five on our agenda is Agreement Number 303-16, the Clink Resurfacing. We've got a resurfacing project coming up.
We do, the, the city was awarded a Clink grant for the resurfacing of Central from Jones to Summit. Tonight, we're asking you to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with the Secretary of Transportation for this project. The Clink program is something the city takes advantage of annually, and that's to resurface our state highways that we are responsible for maintenance within the city limits. The program provides up to $200,000 to the city, and projects are cost what, 50/50 between the city and KDOT. The remainder of the cost for these projects come out of sales tax funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the, when will this work potentially start?
This won't be until next summer.
Okay. I entertain a motion. Anybody got questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute for, on behalf of the city of El Dorado, Agreement Number 303-16 between the city and its Department of Transportation.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item six on our agenda would be for advisory board appointments. We have a couple of planning commission appointments and youth commission. A lot of youth commission is something we do every year. So, this group, we talked about a little bit in our work session last week. Any further comments or discussions about the appointments?
Do you want them all read out loud?
Sure.
Okay. I move to approve the advisory board appointments as presented. Dan Bullock and David Stewart for Planning Commission, Michaela Shabbett, Carly?
Audrey.
Okay.
Rayanne Gomez, Brecklin Olson, Taylor Brock, Jessica Baker, Callie Carter, Abigail Edwards, Justin Jones, Lauren Lowry, Gretchen Schum, Hannah Brock, Hannah Howery, Isaac Har, Sean Lewis, and Cherokee Reagan for the Youth Commission.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve appointments. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Mayor, as we spoke at the work session, just so that people at home can see, we still have openings on the airport ward, good one. We have two openings on the board zoning appeals, three openings on the convention and tourism committee, one on the library board, and two on the tree board.
Okay. I guess for those that are watching this meeting, have an interest in any of those wards, please contact your city commissioner or come down and get an application. Preferably come down and get an application. So, thank you, Tabitha, for sharing that. Okay. Item number seven, Dilly Deli Resolution for the Sale of Liquor at Oktoberfest.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Dilly Deli has requested a liquor permit for the Oktoberfest event. That will take place on September 23rd and be on First Street between Main and Vine. And it'll go from 4:00 PM until midnight, and it'll be part of the Oktoberfest events, which include the 5K run and the live bands that are downtown.
This is a similar event that we did last year, correct? Was Dilly Deli the sponsor for that last year? Great. Well, it was a good time last year, so.
What's resolution number?
Twenty-eight twenty-three.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2823, a resolution authorizing the temporary permit for the consumption of alcoholic liquor during Oktoberfest event in 100 block of East First Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item eight is a resolution for the sale of liquor at Big Beer Bash at Walnut Brewery.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, this will be the same as the Dilly Deli resolution. This one will just be for July 30th of this year. It'll be from 10, sorry, from noon to 10:00 PM, and it'll be on the block down in front of Walnut River Brewery, and that's on?
Locust.
Locust. So, the 100 block of West Locust, right? Yeah. They have several events happening that evening that we, the community, we were helping with, so. Looking forward to everyone coming down and celebrating.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Resolution number?
Twenty-eight twenty-four.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2824, Resolution Authorizing the Temporary Permit for the Consumption of Alcohol Liquor During the Walnut River Big Beer Bash Event in the 100 Block of West Locust Street.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? I have a question that goes back to the other one, too. These are liquor instead of cereal malt beverage, based on the alcohol content of the beverage.
Yes, and so, I think this, I know last year Oktoberfest, they sold Walnut River Brewery, which is not 3-2, it's liquor store beer. And the same thing was true for, I think, Demo products, and that's, that's the rationale for that license instead of a cereal malt.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We've got some, we've got some fun time coming up. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is new business. Chance to bring something to the commission that, anybody have any new business to bring forward?
I've got a few just quick things I'll plug. One is, we'll start up, I think, the end of next month with youth commission again. And I would just put out there, I'm kind of trying to organize some projects that we'll do for the school year. We've got a few things tentatively planned, but if someone in the community had anything that they thought our group could be involved with, it would make sense to get in contact with me, and we'll see if it's a good fit and maybe something we can work together on. Of course, I'm sure everyone's going to say, but a big kudos to everyone involved with Drums Across Kansas and CVB for all their hard work. I thought it was a really neat event, a beautiful evening for it. Friday night, the Koots Art Museum is having their annual fundraiser at the Butler Welcome Center, the Art of Vino and Brew. I think you can get tickets at the door. Main Street is also having one, but I'm not sure if tickets, I think they stopped selling them last Friday, but don't, if you have interest, you might reach out to Main Street and see if you can still get in on that. And then the last thing, I just wanted to mention, you know, with everything going on in our country the past couple of weeks, it's kind of like watching the news. It has made me really proud to hear a lot of things that they're talking about they need to fix with local police departments, and hearing a lot of things that Chief Zeeman and our guys have proactively, over the past several years, been working on, kind of ahead of all this, as far as community involvement and getting out there and getting to know people and being involved. And so, I would just encourage folks to take any opportunity you can to say thank you and to get to know, more importantly, our officers in town, because I think they really take pride in knowing folks in the community and want that kind of involvement. Anyways, thank you, and I just want to say how proud I was of what they've been doing over the past, I'm sure even before I was involved, but I just know the past few years I've been around on this side of it, hearing a lot of things that they've been proactively working on. It's nice to hear that we're thinking ahead.
And you might want to plug your open house, I mean, aren't you?
Yeah, coming up.
Good evening. August 2nd is Tuesday. It's National Night Out. We'll be doing a celebration in East Park that's open to the public. Hot dogs, hamburgers, and the like, free, and activities for the kiddos and adults as well. So, if you have anything going on, East Park, I believe it's 5 to 8, but that's a national deal that's done every year. It's always the first Tuesday in August, so I'd like to see you come out. Thank you. To you.
I also want to compliment the state on the Drums Across Kansas. That was an awesome, awesome experience. I can't even imagine the amount of time these kids put into practicing to have such precision. I was almost as bad as my grandkids in awe of what was going on down on the field. Second thing, again, shout out to Sue Meyer on our flowers downtown. We all got an email or a phone call from a lady in Burns complimenting us on our flowers downtown, and then I got cornered at church on Sunday by a gentleman, again, saying how nice it is to see flowers downtown, regardless of how hot it is. Awesome job.
Thank you. I, a couple of things I will share. Eldorado Inc. and the Inc. Housing, we go tomorrow to Newton to present our housing assessment information to what is the Housing Interagency Advisory Committee, some city staff and some folks from Inc., as well as other, others involved, others from the community involved, filters and such, will be up there to talk through that. That is a step we'll take towards understanding how to best apply and apply for CDBG funds to affect our housing in a positive way in town, so interested in that outcome tomorrow. I know a lot of us, a lot of us are going, so that'll be interesting. Main Street, and I was going to say something, thanks for saying something, about steak dinner. It is this Friday, and if you do want tickets, I'm sure you can still get one. That, contact to Main Street. But the other thing I have, I guess, we had said something about the disc golf, and I didn't give you heads up, Herb, but is there any update or status on the disc golf?
We've had our, our committee, which is made up of two members that were on the sales tax advisory board, two members from the recreation commission, a member of the planning commission, and a member at large that's very into disc golf in our community. They have reviewed in RFQ that we've put together. They've been sending contact information for designers they're aware of, especially the ones that, there's a couple of them that have played a lot of disc golf and traveled around. So, we are ready to send those out here shortly, start sitting down with that group and having interviews with potential designers.
Have an idea of timeline?
We're shooting for August 5th for responses back from designers.
Do you have an idea of timeline when they'd be able to play?
I do not.
Okay.
I mean, our goal, when you guys talked about that, was next year that we're going to be able to have disc golf.
Okay, good. I'm anxious to see, that has a lot of, a lot of public comment, too, so we're anxious to see that look forward.
And are you all familiar with the RFQ process? Would you want, would it benefit you to have me elaborate on what we're talking about, how we're doing this?
Do you need some more?
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Did you want to share with the commission about our trip to creativity economics?
Yeah. Go ahead.
We, Vince and I and Herb went over to a deal Wichita State hosted last week, just about kind of the economic impact creativity has in a community, and they kind of had some folks speak to, speak to that, you know, in cities that I think were as small as 3,000, all the way up to Portland, Seattle, and the big cities. And I think it's a series, I mean, there's going to be several more conversations coming up, but just the importance of arts and the community, and communities of all sizes, and what that does for everything, and how communities flourish with that. And, you know, kind of the discussion, debate, if you will, was what defines art and, you know, I think, kind of get people to think outside the box a little bit when it comes to the minds that think up things that we use every day, from what we drive and pens and all that kind of stuff, to the art you see at the Koots Art Museum, the people that perform on stage. And I think for me, I was just pretty proud of the fact that we do, for a community our size in rural Kansas, have pretty, I mean, we're about to have a performing arts center. We've got an art museum downtown, and we have a lot of people that are really involved in that, I think. We were talking the other day, and I was talking to some folks about it, to think about how many people that are photographers in town, you know, that's a whole other art form in itself. So, anyways, I don't know if there's much to report on, other than it was really, I really enjoyed the conversation and look forward to the ones coming up, and just trying to get better ideas of how we can successfully kind of bridge the gap. to get better ideas of how we can successfully kind of bridge the gap between folks that really embrace the arts and folks that embrace it, they probably just don't think of, think of themselves as being so in tune with it and what it can do for the community.
That was one of the four-part...
Yeah.
...series. It's basically going to talk about art and economic development, kind of the economics behind it, some of the benefits associated. So, I'm interested in the next few sessions to see how that plays out. Yeah, it was a good, it's good. And I think, what, anything I noticed is, El Dorado and, I think, Heston, they're the real communities represented. The rest of them were, it was a good crowd, but I don't know if there was a, I was glad that we were there together to listen to that, so...
I agree.
On the heels of that, we had a conversation in our last work session about image campaign. And I think we, as a commission, left there with, I believe with a consensus to own that. That's to kind of remind everybody who's listening in the audience, that's a topic that came out of a visioning session that El Dorado Inc. and the city both hosted a year ago. Some, housing came out of that and several other initiatives, but this is something that's been, this, this certain initiative has not gotten traction yet, and I think, as I look back on those notes, something that the commission and the city probably should, should be the leader on. We talked about it being, telling our story and making sure that we have a cohesive and a good story. We have a great story. It's just a matter of getting it all, getting it focused. So, we had that discussion at the work session. What, what would be our next steps to move that forward?
What we're doing now, kind of the consensus of the commission, was that we, again, much like disc golf, create a RFQ, so a request for qualifications for professionals to help in this work. And so, that's what staff's doing. I think you haven't really defined, I don't think, who you're going to give it to, who you're going to want to be involved in that process, other than some, having the commission be kind of, I think, the driving force. But, and so, you can give that some thought, but we're working on that RFQ right now, and I expect it'll be ready to go out a week or two.
Okay. Well, at that point, we've got to understand what kind of structure we want to have, or whether or not we're asking those professionals to lead us through that organization, organizational structure, or whether we're going to create it and have them be a part of it. I think that sort of makes part of the discussion. I would, I would anticipate, or I would think it would be a pretty, really, use the term grassroots, we'd have a lot of public involvement and want that story, want that image...
I mean, you had it, you had it at the Inc.
Yeah.
That was all people giving up a day to come work.
That's what I thought. I mean, you talk about it coming out of the Inc. deal. It was one of the hotter topics, I think, at that deal. And I think, given the opportunity for people to really come, bring some thoughts to the table, it'll be interesting to see. Like you said, it'll be a total grassroots effort, probably.
And I guess I would say it's, this is not a, this is not a new logo effort, I mean, and a new mantra effort. This is a, this is who, this is an image effort. Anyway, thanks for the commission, for your consensus. I think, I think I'm excited about what it can, what it can tell for us. Anything else?
The only thing I'll add real quick, I'll just mention, and Herb maybe was going to mention it, I don't know. We talked to the folks at Prairie View, they came and spoke to us last time, and we asked staff to kind of get some ideas of what was going on. I heard back from two of the different families, and just want to say thanks to Scott and Brad. I don't know if anyone else went out, but they went out and spoke with them, and I think you've kind of come up with some tentative plans and options, and are going to try and get that taken care of. So, I just wanted you all to know that, too.
And Scott jumped in, if I mess him up. What we discovered was that the system where it outfalls, so what Prairie View owners came and talked about, was built and designed for just that little piece of that subdivision, and all the growth that went on to the north of it after that was attached to it. So, that system wasn't big enough. The outfall isn't, doesn't have the capacity to drain everything that's been tied into it. And I think it's, you're only hearing about it because that, that block has been developed in the last five years, and so now you actually have people down there that can see it. And so, we are, we're going to go in and enlarge that pipe, and that work is maybe starting now. I know Brad told me they were out knocking on doors, telling everyone that we're getting ready to work, and so that work, those maintenance stuff is getting ready to happen right now. And the only one they didn't talk to was Gus's brother.
I talked four-thirty.
Huh?
He talked to me today, and he was aware of it, and said, "Thank you," and I saw him at work today. So, that was...
Thank everyone.
And so, that's what Brad said. Everyone was positive.
And what's occurred, when that development was put in, that was prior to the golf course having the new nine, as you would call it, the new nine holes to make it eighteen, and the golf course, when they built that, changed a lot of the drainage in the area. And in fact, they took the city's storm sewer infrastructure and modified it. With, as far as I know, without the city's permission at the time, so...
And so, and so, when you, the, that your last meeting, when the lady came up and told you that there was still water in it Sunday, I mean, that's, that's why. The modifications that took place on, on, on the golf course was built the box, and so now you, now you're storing water in that pipe, because it was not a box with a hole in the bottom, it was a hole in the top, and it's to perk out the top. And so, that was a modification. The last one on that system that really doomed it, and so, we're going to fix that.
Anyways, thank you for...
Okay. I wanted to, for those of you that don't know, the front nine greens of Prairie Trails are now open, and everybody I've talked to says they're great, so come out and play, see what you think. And I wanted to ask Scott, been asked a couple of times by a couple neighbors, is West Locust still on the deal for this year?
It is. We are, we were trying to team that with another project, since it's such, it's a small scope project, so we're trying to find additional work to...
And I thought that's probably what it was, so I was hoping I didn't lie to them, so...
Yeah. No, we want to get you all, we want to get that benefit district the best price we can, and to mobilize for that small of a project.
Okay. And Herb, were you going to speak about anything about the Legion in your manager report, or should I ask that?
I'm not all done yet.
Oh, okay.
But you can, I mean, I can. We can do whatever you like.
Well, I mean, if you don't have...
All I know is our figures right now.
Okay, well, maybe just...
Well, I mean, I guess...
Get those, and then if...
The, I didn't even bring him. Do you, do you just, maybe just tell everyone that we had a request to, about the Legion and its lease, and our lease with the Legion, and how that worked. And so, so I'm gathering some information to report back to the commission on.
Okay. That will be...
And then, and aren't all of that still on the website? Didn't we put that up there years ago? Wasn't that the first thing?
One of the first things we put up, but I'd have to look...
We'll check and make sure, but I think also it's, it was one of, it was one of the first pieces of document that we put on our website for people to view. But I'm still gathering information.
Yeah. That'll be a good reminder, refresher course, as we start to have this, this golf conversation, too, just to kind of know what our boundaries are and what, what, what the future holds for that. So, yeah, thank you. Anything else? New business. We'll move to item ten, which is the city manager report.
Have anything else to report, Mayor?
It moves us to our last item, then, which is executive session, for the purpose of discussing matters related to non-elected personnel. How much time?
Half an hour, you think?
Yeah. Okay. Thirty minutes. Let's resume at...
Call it seven forty-five?
Yeah. Yeah, seven forty-five.
I move to recess into an executive session for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected personnel, and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the City Commission Room at seven forty-five P.M.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to retire executive session for non-elected personnel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. We will retire the executive session and reconvene at seven forty-five.